All right, good evening, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May 9, 2023, and this meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcast. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. We have a school choice hearing this evening, so if I could have a motion, please, that is required to open our school choice public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have no one signed up to make a comment right on the issue of school choice. Is there any discussions with the committee on school choice? If not, I'll hand that over to Dr. Bailey. She may give your recommendation.
So I recommend that the school committee vote not to accept school choice pupils from other districts for the 23-24 school year, which is in line with what we've been doing.
We have done that at the past. Is there any questions, concerns, or thoughts about voting against school choice this time around?
It will take place in the regular session.
All right, so we'll take a vote in our regular meeting session for that. So I do need them a motion to close our public hearing so we can move into our regular meeting this evening.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So if I could have a motion, please, to now open our regular school committee meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Do you need a roll call vote?
I'll do a roll call. This is going.
Oh, you can't hear us? Yes. It's not working. Oh, it's just not close enough, I'm sorry.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Harcraft?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Sorry about that. Okay, we're going to start with approval of minutes payroll and warrants. If I could have a request, a motion of approval, please, for the minutes of March 7, 2023.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If I may request an approval of the minutes of April 4, please, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And finally, if I can request approval of payroll and warrants?
So moved.
Any discussion? Again, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. And again, we have no one signed up for public delegation this evening and no old business. So we'll move right on to new business with Dr. Bailey's school choice vote, which we just discussed.
So I just need a vote from the committee, and again, I'm recommending not to.
And again, I'm not sure if that was her recommendation against school choice. So if I could have a motion, please, to vote no on school choice.
So moved.
We have a second. Any further discussion on this matter?
I just want to add that the reason why I feel we should not vote for school choice is because I really like our classroom sizes, and I believe that we have an inundation of people, students coming to our school that it's going to offset the nice balance that we have finally received here in school districts. So that is the reason.
It's also an issue of high school tuition because once they're in our district, they're ours.
Right. Yes, two good points to be taken into consideration. So we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. Next up is the personnel report. We have that in your packet, and we have one reservation since the last meeting. Any questions on that?
No, thank you.
Okay. Tonight, we have a question. Elementary teachers, Mrs. Silva and Mrs. Suza, presenting animal projects in kindergarten, which is an integration of the ELA Wonders Program and writing and science integrated. And there's Mrs. Silva now, so feel free to introduce yourself, and I'll let you take it from here. So thank you so much.
I'm Mrs. Silva, kindergarten teacher.
I'm Mrs. Suza, kindergarten teacher.
And we both teach the inclusion classrooms. Is this on?
You have to get really buzzed.
We both teach in the inclusion classroom, so we do a lot of our planning together.
Great.
So this year, we did an animal project, which was initially inspired by our wonders unit.
I'll just go over.
There we go. So the inspiration for this unit came from the Unit 7 of our wonders materials. It also, we noticed that the students were very interested in the animals and the animal habitats as we were going through those books. So we decided to kind of take it a little further. And we also wanted to really integrate the reading, writing, and science curriculum all into this one unit.
So the project connects to the district plan with Strategic Objective 1, Achieving Academic Excellence for Students, as well as Strategic Objective 3, Strengthening Partnerships with Parents in the Larger Community. We will talk more about the family project in more slides, but we had a family project to go home to connect the animal habitats with our classroom.
So our focus standards, we had the ELA standards, which included literacy, our reading standards, and some of our writing standards. I don't think you really want me to read all of the standards. It also, we included our speaking and listening standard, and then two of our science standards.
So these research materials were based on the books that we were read aloud or leveled readers, and they all involved animals and animal habitats. So in reading groups and as whole groups, we were talking about animals throughout the entire Unit 7.
Some of our additional resources, the Zuporn book, which was the first book in that unit, also has a website. So we were able to go to their website and explore. And on their website is live animal feeds, so the children can actually watch the animals live in action, and they really enjoyed that part of the research. We also worked with Mrs. Ash from our library, our school library, and during our library time, each student was able to find a book about the animal that they were researching. And we were able to bring those books back to our classrooms and set up our own little library. So they were not only able to look at the research book from their animal, but all of the students could kind of view all of the different animals that we were researching. Each student also used their Chromebooks for additional research. We looked up fun facts about our animals, as well as their habitat, and you'll see that in part of their project. And then various art materials that we used.
So this is an overview of the process. We started with research where we read the books, and we checked out those at the library, and we watched videos. And from there, they went on to writing about their specific animal, which they had to identify the size, the color, their habitat, predators, and interesting facts about their animal. After writing about it, they then created a clay replica of their animal. So using their own creativity, they created it and then painted it. And then the family connection was their research page was sent home, and they had to create a habitat out of a box, a shoebox or any box they had, and we used any materials that fit what they researched about their animal. And then, once the projects came in, all the students presented their project in front of the class and told them, their classmates, about their animal and about where it lives.
And like we said, there was a high student interest in this. So we also turned a lot of our collaboration centers, which we have at the end of the day, into animal related. So one of the wonders books was about a vet. So we turned our dramatic play area into a veterinary center. The writing and the library center was part of our collaboration at the end of the day. And we also, both classrooms, had a center that included different animals with materials that they could use to kind of create and build their own habitats. So these are just a few of the projects that they had. So each child wrote and filled out their kind of questionnaire about their particular animal, and then illustrated their animal as close to the actual animal as they could.
I think it's excellent.
And we had some really unique animals. Actually, one of the students came up with an animal that was in the book that I had never heard of. So I was also learning quite a bit. So this was the ocelot and the crown zatbaka. And then, there is a link on here. So if you are interested in viewing more of their projects, the little link on the bottom corner kind of shows you a lot of the different projects. And then we have two videos. I'm going to show you one video, but then we also have a special guest with us who wanted to present her project herself. So I don't hardly invite them. And Mrs. Ash was great working with us, and she has also invited us to let the students share with the fourth grade because they also have a project. Nope, wrong one.
Wrong, sorry.
So this is Levi. Just a reminder, I mean, they stand up and talk to each other in class, but this was their really first time kind of presenting something that they had learned, some new information. So they all really did a great job being able to stand up in front of a group and present their thoughts and ideas.
To think that five- and six-year-olds are doing research. Great.
Patrick, I can play my.
Yeah. Me and my. We don't. Two fun facts. My animal is the finnet fox. It weighs eight pounds. It's tan. Habitat, burrow, predator, is jackals. It has fur. A, it is a mammal. Two fun facts. They are nocturnal, they can be very happy.
And where are these burrows?
In the desert.
Desert. Anything else we should know about the finnet fox?
Um, I don't know.
You want to show us your... Just tell us about it.
I put, um, my mom grew rocks and dry grass. And we glued on sand, and we did a nighttime sky.
Why did you do a nighttime sky?
Because they are nocturnal.
And does it have a burrow?
Yes, right here. And then we glued sand on that, and then put sand on the burrow.
Cool. All right, thanks, Levi. Do you want to stand or sit?
I'm gonna sit.
Hi, Selena. Can we move, can I move that microphone over?
Selena, Selena, do you want to use my microphone? That would be fun. Oh, yeah. You want this side or this side?
This side.
All right. So you have to speak into the microphone, and you're going to tell us about this, okay?
My animal is an ocelot. It can go up to 30 pounds. Its color is brown and black and white. Its habitat is the savannas or the rainforest. It sleeps in trees. Its predator is big cats. It has fur, and it's a mammal, and it lives in the cat family. And fun fact about my animal is it's covered with spots. And no ocelot has the same spots. And their mom, ocelot, can be six years old. She has one to four kittens. Ocelots are mostly nocturnal.
Wow. Good job. So, Selena, another one. Could you just show this to the committee? Because I think this is beautiful, your project. Yep, just kind of walk around, show everyone your beautiful project.
Oh, wow, Selena, that is really, really beautiful. I love all the greenery that you used. Did you have fun with this project?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks fun. I bet you'll remember it for a long time.
Selena, I thought you were in first grade. You did so excellent, so good. Can we have another round of applause for Selena? I have something special for you tomorrow when I go see you in your classroom because I think I am so proud of you to come to this school committee meeting and share your project with all of the committee members and the audience. I hope you feel proud of yourself. Do you feel proud of yourself? Yeah, all right.
You should, thank you, Selena.
Very, very good.
And all of the projects are on display in the school library.
Excellent job. You're a researcher, Selena. Did you know that? Yeah. All right, well, listen, thank you again for sharing, and I hope you come see us again, but I will be visiting your classroom. Okay? Okay?
Selena, do you want me to put that back in the library?
That's great.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Suza and Mrs. Silva. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ms. Ash.
Does anybody have any questions for the teachers? But you can see the type of work that they start doing right away in kindergarten, all the way up. Madam Chair, I'm just going to ask that we take something out of order tonight because we do have a training law with us. I'd ask that we could go into executive session and then return to the regular agenda.
Okay. I find we're taking that out of order. We have an issue with taking the executive session out of order. We do need to return after executive session. That's all. Okay? All right, so what we need to do is adjourn our regular meeting just temporarily, and then we'll come back. So if I could have a motion, please, to adjourn our regular meeting so we can move into executive sessions?
So moved.
Second.
I think a roll call vote on that, so all those in favor. Sorry.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Harcraft?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
And we will be returning shortly to continue our meeting. Thank you. I just want to note for the public that the reason for executive session is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Votes will be taken concerning Dr. Bailey, Superintendent Dr. Bailey. Also, we're moving into executive session to discuss security personnel or devices, discuss recommendations regarding safety and security audit. Thank you. Okay, welcome back, everybody. If I could please request a motion to open our public meeting?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Will you take a roll call, Mr. Bailey? I'm sure I will. Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Harcraft?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, and then to start, we are going to take a vote now. If I could request a motion, please, to approve the new contract for Dr. Bailey, Superintendent Dr. Bailey, for the fiscal year 2023 through 2026?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? We're going to take a roll call vote on that. Sure can. Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Harcraft?
Oh.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
And motion passes. Great. And then we're going to pick back up where we were in our agenda before we go for executive session. So I think we're at the technology update.
Yes, so I would like to call Mr. Missler to the podium.
All right.
Just got this set up and we'll jump in. Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, school committee members. I have the long-awaited 10-year plan.
This is fantastic.
Glad you like it. Long story short, the beauty of this is it's kind of a living document. And so what I mean by that is it doesn't just stop at 10 years. You can take this and move it on for the next 20. It gives whoever comes in many years down the road, they have a building block to kind of work on. So you'll see on that first 10-year projection detail, gives you an idea of what we need in this district just to kind of run our infrastructure as is. That includes your firewall, your wireless access points, the switches. We even threw cameras in here. And we broke it apart, and let me scroll down. Here, you see some manual license. You see bandwidth in here. You're going to see, for instance, we have our projectors here. And if I go down the district system, some of you may think, why don't we have every piece of software? I left a lot of the curriculum stuff off here. What's on here is stuff that we need day-to-day to keep compliant and keep up and running for what we have for infrastructure. So then, if you look at our 10-year financial projection, I put numbers to that. So this makes it kind of easy for a school committee and tech directors, for that matter, that at the bottom, when you see total, you can kind of forecast the years that are a little bit heavy-hitting. And by that, the reason why that kind of is beneficial is, say, in FY '26, you're going to see it's 336 is the rough number. If we know that we're running a little hot that year, we need to do something, but we have a little bit of an overage in FY '25, maybe you can offset some of this. You're going to see some numbers down at the bottom, for instance, where it says different systems. I literally increased by 2%. The hard part with that 2% is we don't know if that's going to be the case when it comes to software. It could be 5%, 6%, but this gives us a building block to kind of work off. So it kind of shows you what we need. You're going to see in here projectors and interactive systems. So for instance, in FY '24, we have a little bit of a bigger number in these two columns. That's because there's some inequality in the district. When we did our inventory, we found that some classrooms don't have the same as other classrooms. So this is to kind of correct the wrong, to make sure that we have similarity in every single classroom quality, and you don't have the have-and-have notes. You're going to see here, for instance, what it costs us per year for our firewall licensing, what we need to plan for, again, for our cameras, roughly 60 grand to replace assets. I put in a thing called notes. This was just simply to kind of give you guys an idea of my thought process on the whole thing. E-rate and capital planning is not part of this because those two things, you can't really plan for. E-rate, we have a rough idea, but it varies year to year. So the kind of goal is you start with what our cost is, and then e-rate and capital planning takes off of that cost. So if capital planning works, then you're not paying that bottom-line number. If e-rate hits pretty heavy, great. That means we're not touching that bottom-line number. You're going to see in here that I say if our students increase, so say we have housing development or kiddos come here, and we get a larger increase in students, that's going to change what we have for our, say, Chromebook income, our Chromebook annual change-up. I'll actually jump back to that right now. You're going to see on this line item right here, student devices, FMS, fifth grade, and AESK. We plan to have 120 Chromebooks per year for each grade, for each fifth and kindergarten. The reason, you may ask, why do we need that? They literally only last about four years. So what we have in here is every four years, the kiddos are going to get a new device, essentially. So when they hit fifth grade, they're going to get a new device that takes them to eighth grade. They don't take it with them. And what we do at the end of that is we recycle that equipment, and we get some money back. So when I bring up that if the students increase, that means it increases our numbers for Chromebooks that are needed. One thing to note, we had a jump in Chromebook price from last year to this year. It went from roughly $2.50 to $2.75 to $3.50. That gives you an idea of how technology's changed just in one year. And that's going to fluctuate based on our economy, based on chips and sets. And when I said living document in the beginning is all we're going to do is next year, I'm literally going to change that number. It's going to reflect for the following years. It gives us a base plan, and we can even put this thing up on the website if you guys like, but it gives everyone the ability to kind of see what we're doing. The projection does not have all the small items because that just gets really minutia. You're going to get stuck in the weeds on that one. This is really just kind of the meat and potatoes. Ideally, this is, again, creates a timeline and guidance for us keeping the district up to date, secure, and in working order. When I mentioned security, it's, you guys all know it. If you have an old device, a lot of times, for instance, Windows, once it's past prime, it doesn't receive security updates anymore. So if you don't plan to actually replace those devices, it becomes a security issue in the district. So that means if we have a device anywhere in here, no matter what it is, if it gets a virus, it's more likely to spread that virus through our network than, say, an updated machine. So what we have in this 10-year plan addresses all of that. And again, the goal is to, for the 10-year plan is for quality and make sure that we have all our classrooms have the same moving forward.[1645.46] And one other thing I have on here is you're going to see inventory. This just kind of gives you guys an idea of what we have in the district. You're going to see this row right here. This is what we actually track. I took off that data. And the reason why I took that data off is kind of up here. Some of you may not know this. However, if you take an Apple product and I have that serial number, I can report that serial number as stolen, and Apple will take its time sometimes and lock you out of that device. So district-wide and town-wide, you actually kind of want to hide some of this stuff from public consumption, because we don't want to think of it, but sometimes you can have a person that just wants to act nefarious and kind of shuts you down. So we've removed some of those identifying numbers or data. And then scrolling through, you see what we have in this district. We have quite a bit. And for the, I'm proud of the technicians that they've run around and ASATAGged every single device that we have in this district. And moving forward, every device that comes in here is going to have an ASATAG, security's going to be set up on it properly. We have those procedures in place in the tech department, and it's going to be added to this list. So this is kind of the 10-year plan for you guys. Just going to ask if any questions, concerns, thoughts, comments? Want me to add anything?
This is great. Thank you.
Yeah, this is great, having this all mapped out. We really, we needed this. I'm sure this will be helpful. And, yeah, what do you think?
Thank you very much.
Definitely a lot of work in a short amount of time. So I, you know, on behalf of the district, appreciate all of your work in your department as well. Thank you. All right. Moving on. Next up, I'd like to call up Ms. Rigori. She will give us a curriculum update.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the School Committee.
Good evening.
Good evening. So tonight, I want to share a little bit about a few grants that we've received over the last year. The first we're very excited about is the Open SciEd grant. And we currently have a science curriculum in the middle school for grades five through eight, Amplify Science. And the fifth grade is kind of more an elementary model for the Amplify Science, but grades six through eight is its own program. And what we're finding with that program is...
Sorry, Ms. Rigori, we're trying to find your presentation. It's not in here. Is it not in here? Just to clarify, if it's not in here, we can turn around. I just want to make sure. Okay, so, sorry, go on.
Sorry about that. So we're looking to switch over our science curriculum to this Open SciEd, it's called. And we're looking to increase student engagement. We're always kind of looking for ways to cut costs with curriculum. And so this Open SciEd, well, the grant we received is for $23,700. And this is a three-year grant. And the grant was actually awarded to us through Boston College from the 1-8 Foundation. And so, yeah, this will be for three school years, starting next school year. And the grant includes professional development for teachers and administrators, and also a portion of the materials that will be used for the science program. So Open SciEd, the curriculum itself is a free, open-source curriculum. So what we're really getting with the grant is the professional development that comes along with it, and then materials to conduct, it's a very hands-on, phenomenon-based, discovery-type, inquiry-based learning opportunities for students. And so there's a lot of materials and consumables, durables and consumables that come along with that. And this is a green-rated, it's the top-rated science curriculum in EdReports, which is a group that rates curriculum nationwide. And they are the, all of the units are aligned to both the next-generation science standards and the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. So why is this good news for Acushnet? The curriculum itself is free, so moving forward, you know, we will have to purchase, once this grant were to expire, we would need to purchase the consumables, but that, you know, would need to be purchased no matter, no matter the curriculum that we were using. But it's nice that the curriculum itself is open-source and free, and it should remain that way. And this is going to really transform our student learning experience. And we're looking to increase student engagement. And one thing that's really amazing is that, so the science teachers at the middle school, there's one science teacher per grade. And so they collaborate, they're great, it's a great team, and they do collaborate with each other, but they don't have a great level partner to collaborate with. This program is very common now in the state and becoming increasingly more common. And so I'm going to show you in a minute a map of all the districts in the state that are using Open SciEd. So when we were learning about this grant, we put a lot of time, Michelle Sylvia, the principal, our academic coach, Christine Demers, and the middle school science team, we all put a lot of time into receiving this grant. It was not something we just filled out paperwork for. We had meetings upon meetings with the team. They were very selective about the districts that they were accepting, and they really wanted to know that we were committed to this. And a big part of the commitment is the collaboration with other districts in the state, and also the willingness of our teachers to be going to these professional development opportunities, which I have to say, our teachers are very excited about. They're just extremely excited about this, this new opportunity. And so while we were researching, we visited the Henry Lord Middle School in Fall River and did some observations as a team, and saw the curriculum in action, and it was, it was good, it was very good stuff. And so we already went to our first professional development as a team in Worcester at the DCU Center. And that's the picture of the room, kind of before everybody got there, and it's just, there were so many teachers and administrators from across the state who are in this cohort with us, newly implementing the curriculum, and we will be attending professional development with schools from across the state. So this is the map of Massachusetts, and these are the districts that are using Open SciEd. So Cohort One started two years ago, Cohort Two schools started last year, and now we are a part of Cohort Three. So there's a little yellow dot over Acushnet on that map. And as you can see, we have a lot of surrounding towns that are part of either Cohort One and Cohort Two. So this is going to open up opportunities for our science teachers to work with other teachers in the region.
So this, in some ways, will be a curriculum cost savings, because we, what we had, we already, sorry, we already knew we were going to be looking at new science curriculum. Now we have this free, open-source curriculum, and we've received the grant for the training. So in some ways, that'll be a bit of cost savings as we go into the next few years with curriculum, correct?
Correct. There are materials that we will need to purchase.
Right, right, you said that.
But it will be a savings.
I'm assuming I'm seeing Fairhaven up there? Is that Fairhaven?
I don't believe, I don't believe Fairhaven, it's ORR.
No, I can't.
I think it's ORR, so it's Marion, Matta Poysitt, Rochester, Taunton, the Fall River Schools.
But, so I guess I'm asking that question because we want to make sure that our kids are prepared, right? A lot of our kids are going into Fairhaven, so will this align with what, you know, other...
It's fully aligned to the Massachusetts standards. So it will cover all of the standards that, yeah, that we will be expected to cover.
What are we doing now? Are we covering?
Amplify Science, and we are, we are covering the standards now also.
Just that as well.
We have Amplify Science, and so Amplify Science was a big, was a big change for our teachers, because that is also a phenomenon-based science program. So the students get a scenario, they read about it, they learn about it, they watch videos, they'll have a situation, and they kind of need to problem-solve through inquiry and figure out kind of what's going on. So it might be like a medical condition or something that they're researching throughout this whole unit, and they're getting more information each day, more information each day. But what we found was that any, anytime with any new curriculum, we need a lot of professional development. And we wanted to increase our amount of professional development for teaching in that program, and that cost alone, to go through Amplify, was going to be thousands and thousands of dollars. So we, we like the appeal of the free professional development, it's multiple days worth. I mean, I would say the equivalent would be at least probably $20,000 in savings just in professional development over the course of the next three years. And also, there's, Amplify is pretty heavy with the Chromebooks, and we're, we were noticing, and the teachers were noticing, that a lot of the activities, they kept having to go back to the Chromebook, back to the Chromebook. Whereas with the Amplify, I mean, with the Open SciEd, it's just a little more, well, there's, the students are not going to access it through the Chromebooks, they're going to access it through the classroom. It has science notebooks, so each student will have their own science notebook, just like a scientist would, and they're going to be keeping their notes, they'll keep collecting their data, doing all of their drawings, sketches, all of that through the notebooks. And just a little more...
More labs?
Yes.
Some more labs? More, more experiential products yet?
More experiential, well, we're dissecting squids coming very soon, yes, like within the, I would say that probably the next month. Well, it would have to be within the next month, right? But...
It's this week.
Yeah, it's this week. Okay, it's this week. Yeah. So yes, more hands-on, more discussion-based, and I would say more inquiry, problem-solving.
I would say really one of the things that we have the buy-in from the teachers, the teachers were part of this research on the program, and they've gone to trainings, they're excited about coming in the summer to do this work, to get these units prepared, so we're excited that they're excited.
Yeah, the, the science teachers will be attending a four-day training over the summer. And they're, and they're excited about it.
Well, congratulations on getting the grant.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you. So now we're going to go back to last summer and just, we did have, we did run a summer acceleration academy last summer, and I don't believe I presented on that yet. So that was a $34,000 grant. We ran the academy August 15th through 18th. We had incoming kindergarteners, first, second, third, fourth, and eighth. Those grades are the way that the grant is, is written, so those, we have to fall within the parameters. That's why it's only selected grades, that's the way it is. So K to three is an early literacy focus, and then we did a math focus for grades three, four, and eight. And, you know, having the rise in kindergarteners come to this, to this academy two weeks before school started was just a really nice way for them to kind of get acquainted. And then we had also a separate grant for February and April, Math Acceleration Academies. So we ran two, we ran a week-long, or four-day sessions during the February and April breaks. That was a $65,000 grant. We had 52 participants in February and 46 in April. The idea of these academies is that they're small groups of, you know, no larger than 10 students per group. And that it's just an intensive focus on math, very hands-on. We had STEAM classes for both units, for both weeks, and we have a slideshow, it's a video. It's, it's kind of long, so I don't think we're going to show the entire video, but we can show just a little bit and get an idea.
I'll stop it there because it's getting late, but we, yeah, and I believe, Dr. Bailey, is this available, this is available on our, on our YouTube page, I believe?
This is on the website.
I'm sorry?
It's on the website.
It's on the website?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, the students really have a great time, and it's a great option for, for those who want to participate. They offer breakfast and lunch. What I've seen is it builds their confidence, so they're really focused on math for those four straight days. They get that specialty of the STEAM, which is a nice break in the day. But anecdotally, I walked around, talked to kids, and they felt confident. And I said, well, do you feel like you're going to go back and, and do better in math? And they do, they all are very, very positive about math, and I think it's the small groups, honestly.
Dr. Bailey, will we have any data at some point that shows what kind of success we saw from the...
Yeah, so the issue that we're having is it's always different kids. So like, you have some kids going in February, other kids are going in April. We're trying to look at MCAS scores to see those math scores of the kids who went to the academy, to see if there is a jump from year to year. So we're still working on that, only because it's not always the same kids, so it's been a little tricky.
Yeah, and we have the list of, we keep, you know, we have all of the students and their MCAS scores, it's just, it's also very hard to parse out, you know, where did that growth, you know?
But I will say, since we've been doing the math academies, our math scores have gone up. Now, is it just that? No, we have new curriculum, we have the math academy, there's probably a lot of contributing factors, but I would say that, you know, when you're getting intense math instruction like this, and we focus on, you know, very focused standards, so we're not all over the place, the teachers have to pick maybe two or three standards that they're going to teach intensely during those four days, and I think the kids master it by the end of the four days.
Yeah.
You know?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rigori. Next, we have the REEDS Board of Directors appointment. This is, I would need a vote for this. This is just, as you know, I'm the president of the REEDS Board of Directors now, but I'm the representative, similar to the, I think it's Mr. Tebs who's on the SMAC board, it's like that. But this board needs to basically appoint me to serve as the representative for Acushnet, and we would need that vote, I would ask that that vote be taken tonight. Do you need to sign too? Yeah, and then date it, once the vote is taken. Okay. All right. So if I give a request, a motion, please, to appoint Dr. Paula Bailey to represent the Acushnet Public School District on the REEDS Collaborative Board?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. During our last meeting, I believe, the committee had asked if I could look into or request some data of the high schools, how many high school students are attending college after their high school graduation. I did reach out to Old Colony, Fairhaven, and New Bedford High School. The only school to respond was Old Colony. So you have that in front of you. I just wanted to be sure that I did follow through and get back to you on the information that you had requested. And, you know, keeping in mind with Old Colony, that a large percentage of their students go directly into industry or apprenticeships due to the nature of their vocational education. But you can also see that many students also go on to the universities.
Question on that, it's not relevant to, you know, your findings. The, they changing the acceptance of students to Old Colony, the criteria...
I know that's been a big issue in the state.
I know they're doing it throughout the state.
I have not heard how Old Colony has changed it, but I know it's supposed to be more equitable across the state with vocational schools. If that's information that you would like, I can certainly get back to you with that.
I just, I was just wondering if they've changed the, Old Colony has.
Okay. Yeah, this is kind of the data, this is a little...
Had a big controversy in the...
On this, but, like, you know, because only Old Colony answered, right? So many are going on to trades or immediate jobs right after high school. That's right. But thank you for the time taken to try to get this information.
I think that's pretty high, it's like 42%.
Yeah, it actually is.
That's, that's pretty high for any school, if we had a trade school.
It is. And then just a couple of things that I didn't anticipate. The Grange in Acushnet recognized AES for their ESEA award, and they presented them with a local citizenship award. So we sent our fourth-grade ambassadors with their families. Mrs. Chesney went, I was there, we had some central office administrators at the Grange. So we really packed the place, and it was just a really nice presentation, and apparently we are up for an award at the state level. So we were nominated at the state level, we'll wait to hear back on that, but that was the Grange. So I just wanted to let you know that happened last week, and it was very well-attended by our students and staff and families. So I appreciate the support on that from our families. And, you know, our students did a little presentation about AES while they were there. They went up on stage, they had posters, they did a really fabulous job. And then the last thing is, because there's nobody new on the committee, I will be sending out the forms for my evaluation. If you have any questions at all, just get back to me and let me know, but it's the same thing as we've always done. And then we'll plan to, if everything is in on time, we'll plan to do that in June.
Paula, it might be helpful for the committee for June as well, if we're doing the evaluation. If there's just like a process timeline around, because the next set of goals will be due for the next school year, it'll be a two-year goal, right? Maybe just from a process perspective and timing perspective to kind of map out what that's going to look like in terms of like, this is when I think I'd have goals, maybe this is when there'd be a draft for the, or whatever that process and timeline looks like.
Okay.
I think the last time we went through it, that would have helped, right?
So you want that for my next round, at the same time as my evaluation? So you want that for my next round, at the same time as my evaluation for this round?
June might be the right time, and it's not your goals, right? It's just like, this is the plan, the timeline of when I would expect to have them, when the committee could see them, when there might be impact input from the committee, just in terms of what the process is going to be.
Sure. Any other questions for me? And that concludes my report for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Okay, we're going to move into the Business Managers' Report, Patrick.
I broke, you can go home.
Chair, you're on the next committee, thank you, go Celtics, all right. No, in all seriousness, FY23 budget, we're in good shape, you know, we're dialing in how balanced we are with the budget and the bottom line, and we'll have those numbers over to the Budget Subcommittee before any further discussion, but we're in good shape. Available budget by the end of April, you can see, was about 3.4 million, I mean, over a third of that is tied into salaries, you know, another third contracted services, so that gives you an idea of where we're at, but we won't be running a deficit, which is, you know, the biggest concern. FY24 budget, again, although it was supported by, you know, the Board of Select, the Finance Committee, just a reminder for, you know, everyone in the public to come out on May 22nd and support our budget annual town meeting, for all the hard work that we've put into it, our teachers, you know, from, from the ground up, you know, including the town, Board of Select, Finance Committee, you know, let's show our support and get out there and vote. Open SciEd, you know, congratulations to Angie and the team for, for applying for that and, and obtaining that grant. Again, it's, we're not going to see so many cost savings next year in regards to this grant, but in the future, you know, free curriculum, and I know that's of interest of many of the departments, so we'll keep our eyes open for more opportunities. The roof replacement project, so actually, we had the manufacturer's roof inspection since I drafted this, they were out here, they were out here today, working on tying out all, you know, the final punch list items, loose ends, we have a meeting with the entire team tomorrow, architect, OPM, contractors, et cetera, to make sure that everything's done and completion, and we can market, you know, 100% at that point. Solar project, we haven't heard about that in a while, so I just wanted to give you an update and sort of a little overall process, as outlined in the notes. Right now, we are about in the middle of steps two and three, so it's kind of a sit-and-wait period while Select files their paperwork with the necessary companies to, to find out what they can offer us with the project. I just want to remind you, if you jump down to step five through eight, that's really where the decision-making comes into place, and if we decide to run with the project or not. So no need to panic yet, no news is good news so far, but, you know, you'll be well-involved in the process before we make any decisions, as well as, you know, the, the town, we're advocating, or, excuse me, we're communicating with the town offices, Board of Select, and the public before we do anything drastic with the solar project, but the appeal is there. Food service, updated meal counts, pretty consistent with prior months, we had a good workshop last month, was it last month at this point, where we talked a little more about, you know, our nutrition program and what questions you have, and how we're going to answer them in the future. So June, I think we have a tentative hold on the school committee meeting agenda to have a presentation for you, to kind of answer your questions, communicate what we've accomplished so far to date, and our goals for the upcoming school year, and we're excited to present that. Just a little note, actually, today, the Senate budget came out, and they are not including free meals across the state for next school year. There's always chance for amendment, but that was news today. And again, you know, we have funds, but we have to be careful in how we spend them, because our participation, we anticipate, will go down if meals aren't free. It's a whole process. So we'll, we'll discuss that further as, as more news comes to the table on that, and as we work together to kind of come up with a spending plan for our, our school nutrition And then just on the news of transportation, I worked with some team members for feedback on the registration process, we sort of overhauled the process where it's going to be, you know, fully electronic this year via Google Form, that should be going out within the next week or so, and we'll have, you know, we'll be well underway for transportation for FY24. One of the concerns, which I've shared previously, is we have a large group of fourth graders, or, yes, fourth graders jumping to fifth graders to the middle school, so it's going to impact our bus capacity and how well we can transport everyone, but we, you know, we have to see what we get for registration numbers before we can tackle that. And that's, that's, that's really it for my report. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Just to reiterate what we talked about in our workshop, we're going to talk more about food in the June meeting, right?
Yeah, we'll have a full slideshow presentation, which, again, you presented, the committee presented us with a group of questions, we're going to have every one of those questions answered. Again, we're going to pat ourselves on the back for what we've accomplished so far, we've worked really hard, and I know you guys know that and see it in some of the results, but it, it's been a busy school year, especially in that department, and we're making a lot of good changes. But there's a long way to go, and we're going to share those goals with you as well. And eventually, you know, we'll come up with a spending plan. I, I like to envision it similar to a tech plan with the inventory of equipment, how often we're going to have to turn it over, and, you know, we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Town meeting is May 22nd, right? Yeah, so I just want to reiterate Patrick's reminder about town meeting and the importance of attendance at that meeting, just to show your support as a community member, that investment in education is really important to this town, so I encourage you all to, to come to town meeting if you can, to show your support. I think that's our last official agenda item, we have some, I would ask if there's any reports from school committee members or comments? Okay, there's a number of communications and information noted there for your packets that you can read when you have some time. And I would just also like to just take a moment to, I believe this is your last official meeting?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Tev, and I really want to thank you for your service over the last few years as a member of the school committee, I've really enjoyed working with you, and I've appreciated your contribution to the, to the school district, so thank you again for your service.
Well, I'll say that.
Thank you. I started speaking on behalf of the district, we appreciate your support. People don't understand, but it's a lot of volunteer hours, it's a lot of, not just these meetings, it's subcommittee meetings, so you're really dedicated and committed to making positive change and impact to our schools, so thank you so much for your contributions.
Yeah, thank you, and I wish everybody best of luck, including those, those who are on the ballot looking to serve in the position, I think it's, it's an opportunity to have some, some impact, certainly on the school district, but also the town, I mean, it's a, quite an item for the town, and I think it's an important service for people to serve in, so best of luck to everybody. I'm sure you'll handle the, the SMAC position and all that stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So actually, just to remind the committee, we are mandated to do that right after the elections.
Right.
Everything will get sorted out again.
Very great.
Yeah, well, we align committees again, I feel like we just did this.
I know.
But here we go again, so, but yes.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure to serve with everybody, including Craig, I think.
Yeah, Craig Sumner, that's right. Well, thank you again. So with that, I find may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Second.
Okay. Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Tev?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Harcourt?
Yes.
Mrs. Dammey?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody, and, oh, sorry, I should have mentioned, the next meeting is Tuesday, June 6th, here at the library, 5:30, thank you.